Call the meeting to order. Thank you and welcome, everyone, for coming and counsel. Because this is the budget presentation night, I went and got a boot in here. And if it works out, you guys like it, next year at budget, we'll all have flowers. Just kidding. I was at the credit union, AGM, and all the special guests get flowers. So I guess I was a special guest this time. But I'll turn the opening over to Counselor Michael Swakstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for making it clear that the rest of us are not special guests. Well, Mr. Mayor, today is Budget Day. Actually, it is Budget Day times two. Earlier today, the federal government released its 2019 budget with total spending projected at approximately $350 billion. And in just a few moments, the city of Steinbeck will table its 2019 budget with total spending projected at approximately $26 million. Obviously, there are many differences between these two budgets. The federal government and the city have different revenue sources and different areas of responsibility. The federal government is responsible for things such as foreign trade, national defense, immigration, and healthcare transfers. In contrast, cities have jurisdiction over things such as basic infrastructure, recreation, fire protection, and policing. Revenue sources for the federal government include income taxes, excise taxes, and a national sales tax, while the city relies on property taxes, user fees, and grants from the provincial and federal governments. As every municipality will tell you, while income taxes and sales taxes naturally grow with the economy, property taxes are far less progressive. Just because someone's house goes up in value does not mean that they suddenly have more disposable income to send in to the government. However, I would argue that the biggest difference between the two budgets you are hearing about today has little to do with revenue sources or areas of responsibility. Rather, these two budgets reflect fundamentally different beliefs about taxes and spending. Let me explain. Today's federal budget projects that the federal government will spend about $20 billion more than it will take in. This annual deficit will be added to the total government's debt, which currently sits at approximately $671 billion. That works out to about $18,000 for every person living in Canada today. Sadly, there is no indication that the federal government has any plan to get out of debt. While Prime Minister Justin Trudeau promised only three years of small budget deficits during the 2015 election campaign, this quickly morphed into huge deficits that could last for decades. Unfortunately, while the federal debt is rising, so are some taxes. Starting on April 1st, the Trudeau government will implement a carbon tax that will affect the cost of just about everything. Driving our cars, heating our homes, and buying food at the grocery store are about to become more expensive. It is incredibly frustrating that the federal government is increasing taxes while at the same time increasing our national debt. In the long run, this is not a good way to budget and is not in our best interests as a country. In contrast, the city of Steinbeck budget takes a different approach to taxes and spending. While I don't want to preempt the budget presentation we're about to hear, let me mention that our budget holds the line on taxes. As a council, we made some tough choices and drafted a budget that will freeze property taxes at last year's level. This does not mean that the city is neglecting important priorities. On the contrary, the city will continue to spend a record amount of money on basic infrastructure while at the same time continuing to put money away in our recreation reserve for future recreation projects. When it comes to debt, the city will present a balanced budget as we are legally required to do. Yes, we are borrowing money for some of our capital projects, but all of our debt will be paid off over a five-year term. There is a world of a difference between short-term debt for important capital projects and long-term debt that is the result of uncontrolled operational spending. In many ways, Mr. Mayor, today is a tale of two budgets. Instead of trying to buy people's votes with their own money, our approach is to invest tax dollars in a responsible manner that benefits our citizens. Thus, I believe that the people of Steinbeck are going to like the city of Steinbeck budget a whole lot more than the federal budget we heard about earlier today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Swakstra. We'll move on to number three, the adopt agenda. Before we adopt the agenda, I'd like to make one addition on 12A. There is a motion for the library that we've received information from Counselor Damian Penner, and we'll review that at that time. So if you can all just pencil that in under 12A. And then I'd like to see if we could have a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor Damian Penner, second by Counselor Bill Hebert. Any comments?
No comments.
Okay. I'll call for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. We have the minutes. Number four, we have the minutes of March 5th, 2019, regular council meeting. They are on page one. We've all had the chance to review them. Looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Swakstra, second by Counselor Jake Hebert. Any comments? Anything further? Okay. I'll call for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Number five, any business arising from the minutes? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to, it has just passed 7:35, so we'll move to the public hearings. Six, ACU 201901. That is RE 357 Elmdale Street. At this moment, we will close the public hearing and open, or close the public meeting and open the public hearing. Mr. Warquentin, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, this conditional use application filed 2019-01 for the address at 357 Elmdale Street is being submitted by the applicant, being Happy Feet Early Learning Center. The property actually is owned by the city of Steinbeck and leased on a long-term basis to the Steinbeck Curling Club. Purpose of the conditional use application is to allow a daycare center to locate on the subject property, whereas City of Steinbeck zoning bylaw 2100, in which the bylaw defines the daycare center as a provision of childcare services for nine or more children in a provincially licensed facility, a conditional use application is required for all daycare centers within the city of Steinbeck. Notices pursuant to the planning act were issued. There is no written correspondence on file. Administration has not identified any schedule or use conflicts between the city's needs and the proposed use. Therefore, the administration's recommendation is council approve the conditional use application subject to any new evidence provided at the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Warquentin. Is the applicant present? And would they like to speak? Okay. Well, we can always see if there's any questions for the applicant. Counsel, do you have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Seeing none. Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to object? Is there anyone here that would like to object to this file? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here that would like to object? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Swakstra?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Damian Penner? Go ahead, Counselor Swakstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I think it's a straightforward request. This is, the daycare center would like to lease space from the Steinbeck Curling Club. There is no indication that there'd be any scheduling conflicts. We're talking about them leasing space during July and August. The hours of operation would be from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, so there's no conflict with any evening events. I think it's a good use of the space. It's nice to see a downtown facility being put to more use. We want to see increased uses downtown, and this is a, this is a good way to do it.
Anything further?
Yeah. I'm just very, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very happy to see that we are utilizing our city buildings to, to the fullest extent, that we're filling this up for the entire months of July and August, Monday through Friday. And it's fantastic to see that there's been a mutual agreement made between the two, the two facilities.
Anything further from counsel? Anything in closing? Okay, counsel, I agree. I, I think statements were correct. It's, you know what? It's this simple. It's a public building that needs to be used for public business, and this is, this is a great use of it on a time when it's not being used. So we'll go straight into the question. I call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you. We will go now to six B. The 2019 financial plan, there's a separate package that was handed over Monday. At this, at this moment, I will close the council meeting and open the public hearing. Counsel, this is the budget presentation. So I will turn the public hearing over to Mr. Warquentin and Brian Herrichek, our senior manager of finance, to present the budget. Dylan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will defer to Mr. Herrichek for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm pleased to be here tonight presenting the city's 2019 financial plan to highlight some of the main items that are planned for the upcoming year. The annual budget cycle is almost a continuous process. For the 2019 budget year, it started early in 2018. Throughout the process, input is provided by staff, management, and council. The financial plan that is being presented today is based on the recommendations of council provided at their final review in November. Some of the highlights for 2019 include a municipal mill rate of 14.09 mills, which is unchanged from 2018. Water rates will also remain steady, while the sewer rate will increase just over eight and a half percent, as previously approved by the Public Utilities Board. Residential garbage collection rates will increase by 3%, while most fees for permits and land use applications will increase by two and a half percent. The overall capital program for 2019 is budgeted at just under $12 million. Some of the larger project plans for the year, as you may have seen on the displays just outside council chambers, include the completion of the supplemental water supply system, Elmdale Street reconstruction, Heritage Cemetery expansion, and the Deerfield Detention Pond and Pathway. Overall, projected revenues for 2019 are just over $30 million. Similar to previous years, property taxes are the city's largest source of revenue, accounting for just over half of the overall revenue amount. Looking a little closer at the property tax revenue, specifically the relationship between property tax values and taxes, for 2019, there was a property value growth of 2.4% in the city. Commercial properties make up about 25% of the total property values in the city, and with the provincial portioning system, a lower portion of residential property values are subject to property tax than commercial property values. As I mentioned earlier, the property tax rate of 14.09 mills remains unchanged from 2018. Approximately half of the budgeted municipal revenues are from property taxes, and just over $15 million is to be raised by property taxes in 2019. The city is also required to collect the education and school taxes on behalf of the province and Hanover School Division. As in previous years, this is projected to make up just over half of the typical residential The average market value for a dwelling in Steinbeck is just under $200,000. Based on this and our budgeted municipal mill rate, the average city property tax bill works out to just over $100 per month. In addition to regular property taxes, supplemental property taxes are levied on new construction or where there was an addition or improvement to increase the value of the property. This is expected to provide an additional $545,000 in 2019. Federal and provincial operating grants have also been a consistent source of revenue for the city. The provincial per capita tax sharing grant is expected to provide around $2.7 million in 2019, while the federal gas tax grant will increase to just over $850,000. One of the main non-tax revenue sources for the city is from user fees. These are fees paid by those who benefit from the service provided. Some of the services compete with the open market, but a number of the rates may be subsidized for programs to be accessible. Development in Steinbeck has stayed strong in 2018 with just under $57 million in total permit value. The pace is expected to continue in 2019 with 140 dwelling units expected to be added and $275,000 in permit fees. Now we will look at some of the programs that are funded by these revenues. Overall, the expenses are equal to the projected revenues at just over $30 million. Some 2019 programs include waste reduction and recycling for $739,000, support for the J-CAP Public Library at around $400,000, the city's beautification program at just over $200,000, and various other programs and initiatives as listed. One of the largest city expenses is that of our employees. The total labor cost, including benefits, for the upcoming year is budgeted at just under $9 million, or roughly a third of the city's operating budget. Of this total, the Aquatic Center makes up about 20% of the total labor hours, the largest of any city department. Protective services include 16 RCMP officers, a community services officer, 39 firefighters, and eight fire trucks. The total cost of these protective services is budgeted at $4.2 million for the upcoming Transportation services. In 2018, the city reached a total of almost 136 kilometers of road surface. The maintenance for this infrastructure can depend fairly significantly on the weather in any given year, and for 2019 is expected to cost around $2.5 million. Solid waste services. We provide both curbside and on-demand pickup services to both residential and commercial properties. The cost of providing these services is expected to reach $2.4 million for the upcoming year, which is funded by user fees. Our primary recreation facilities include the Aquatic Center, Arena, AD Penner Park, Curling Rink, and Soccer Complex, as well as various other green space and parks around the city. We continue to get significant use out of all of our available rec facilities, with the expected cost of operating and maintaining these facilities in 2019 to be $3.8 million. Water and wastewater services. Both the number of customers serviced by the water and wastewater utility and the length of underground infrastructure network continue to grow. The expected cost for the maintenance of this infrastructure and the provision of the utility services is expected to be $3.6 million in 2019. In addition to the typical operating expenses that the city regularly incurs, larger projects also require a significant amount of funds. Some of this funding comes from reserve funds that have been saved in previous years, while other projects will require, will require debt funding. Some of the main projects for the upcoming year include equipment replacement, Elmdale Street renewal, Heritage Cemetery expansion, and the completion of the supplementary water supply system. The total capital program for the year is expected to cost $12 million. The city will periodically issue debt in order to add or renew various infrastructure or facilities throughout the city. Each loan will fund a specific project. In 2019, two projects have a debt component, the purchase of the fire rescue truck, as well as the surface portion of the Elmdale Street renewal. This is expected to create $1.5 million of new debt, while $2.7 million of previously issued debt will be paid off. The city continues to use a five-year amortization term for all of its debt, allowing us to borrow at lower interest rates than if a longer term was used. Our average interest rate for 2019 will be just over 3%, while the debt balance at the end of the year is expected to be $7 million. Payments that are required to be made for previously issued debt will total $3 million in 2019. Of this amount, just under $250,000 is interest. Funding for these debt payments is raised through property taxation, and for 2019, three mills will be required to raise the necessary funds. This equates to just over 21% of the total city tax rate. Finally, a longer-term overview of some of the expected requirements in future years. The 2020 program is currently budgeted at $5.9 million, which includes infrastructure renewal, aquatic center repairs, and equipment replacement. Beyond that, programs of $5.2 million, $10.2 million, and $10.1 million are currently estimated for the following three years. That concludes the presentation of the 2019 financial plan. Thank you, members of council. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of counsel? Counselor Susan Penner has one. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. First of all, thank you for the great job preparing the budget and presenting it. I believe we really noticed at a steady session already, so that all went very well. So just want to express my appreciation. I just wanted to ask a question about debt payments. Seems like a tight year for debt payments. I'm just wondering, is that going to be alleviated soon? Or why is this year?
It's more of a, it's more of a one-year spike than, than anything else. I believe currently for 2020, the debt payment is projected to go down to $2.3 million. So again...
Seven million dollar, or $700,000 difference?
Yeah. Again, I think last year, there was two million, two mills required to pay off, to pay the debt payment, and this year is three. So it's just a larger year for debt payment.
And then in the future, the debt payment will...
And it does come down again in 2020.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Herrichek. Okay, counsel. I, if there are no other questions at this time, we will close the council meeting, or close the, the public meeting, hearing, and open the council meeting. Counsel, this is a budget presentation, and we have to, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have to approve it in principle today? With a motion?
Actually, all the information, including the, the education requirements for both the Hanover School Division and the province of Manitoba, are reflected in this particular document. Recommendation from administration is for counsel to adopt the 2019 financial plan by resolution. And if that proceeds, then administration would prepare the related tax levy bylaws to be submitted at the April council meetings.
Okay. So tonight, we're approving it, we're adopting it, so that you can write out the bylaws and bring it back to us?
That's correct.
Okay. So counsel, I need a motion to approve this budget the way it stands. Counselor Susan Penner, second by Counselor Jake Siemens. Go ahead, Counselor Penner.
Thank you very much. I think this is an excellent budget. The city of Steinbeck is known for having excellent service, and this budget reflects that again. I often hear in the community, great appreciation for what we offer, and although we are known for great service, we're also known that we do keep bringing on taxes, or taxes tight, and that is reflected here. In terms of the mill rate, it's staying the same, which is excellent. There are a few user fees that are be going, going to be raised slightly, but that's a good way to increase revenue, because obviously, then it's user pay, and that reflects, people using the services are paying for them. The key thing I would actually like to highlight here is my quest, as for my question to administration there, on the debt payments. This is a really tight year for debt payments. There's a spike. And I think it would be easy for counsel to have a good legitimate excuse or reason to raise taxes this year. We could easily have defended saying, look, our debt payments are going up significantly this year. We need to raise taxes. And I think it's commendable, I'll say this about my colleagues, commendable, that instead of taking that opportunity, that we looked at it and realized that, you know what, that's only for one year, next year, it'll ease up again, and there'll be that extra $700,000. So, so to me, that is the highlight of the budget, that we didn't take advantage of that situation, because we knew next year, it's going to go back to normal, per se, for Steinbeck. So yeah, thank you to my colleagues, and I am happy to support this budget.
Thank you. Counselor Siemens.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I too will vote in favor of the budget. I think this is a good budget as well. This is a budget that is the first of our new council, first one under your term as mayor. So while this, a lot of the history of this budget is reflected past council, there's also the new council is, is a big part of this as well. But while we are holding a line on taxes, there's still a lot of work that's going to happen. Steinbeck will be a busy construction zone, again, this summer, and in various places. The Deerfield Creek Pathway and Retention Pond is, we're adding to our pathways again, which we've continued to do on an ongoing basis, and we'll talk about that later with the recommendation. But that's good. We're going to be enlarging our cemetery and putting Call Burial in, which has been requested for many years. Our water supply is in growth mode with the project that we initiated a year ago. We continue to work at that, which is one of the biggest projects that Steinbeck has ever undertaken. We keep the Make It Black program alive over the years. That has been going for many, many years, and we continue to keep that and have it in the budget, which is positive. I'm also happy that we are protecting our tree canopy in our community with the Dutch Elm disease program. And with the ash borer now on its, apparently on its way here as well, I think that is important, that we keep reinvesting in our tree canopy in our community. And don't forget, this is also the first budget after annexation. We're just completed our first year through the annexation, and we didn't have a true understanding of costs or the amount of revenue that presented to us, but we were able to hold the line while we were still understanding what the annexational meant to the city of Steinbeck and our budget specifically. But I too think this is a good budget, and look forward to seeing it approved.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Swakstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will obviously also support the budget. I think that what I'm so pleased about is that this is a budget where we made hard choices, where we were faced with additional costs, particularly as Counselor Penner had referenced, a very high debt payment because of the secondary water treatment plant, which is the largest capital project so far that has happened in Steinbeck's history. And to be able to hold the line in taxes while at the same time doing this, the, the largest project that we've ever done, I think that speaks well of the, the planning process that, that we have underway. We are spending in a responsible way while still making sure that the areas that are priorities, and most notably, basic infrastructure, remains a top priority. And so we are moving forward on, on the items that Counselor Siemens had referenced, and I fully agree with, with his comments on those. I'll just briefly note as well that we are continuing to support keeping our city safe. We are continuing to have our 16 RCMP officers that the city pays for. We are investing in our fire department. We continue to make sure that they get new equipment, because we want to keep our city safe. And so certainly on the whole, this is a good budget that, that spends responsibly and yet still makes sure that the priority areas are fully funded.
Anything further? Counselor Damian Penner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to highlight a few points, being this the first budget that this new council has released and, and after, after an election. We, we were tasked with looking forward for sustained growth, which we did with the secondary water supply. We were tasked with looking at recreation, which we are doing with the deer field walking trails, as well as $1 million to the rec reserve. We were tasked by our citizens about safety, which we are doing with the 16 officers, as well as investment into our fire truck. We were tasked with city beautification, which we are doing with, through our Dutch Elm prevention program, as well as investment into the city beautification fund. We were tasked with infrastructure, which we are doing by completing our downtown Elmdale Street, as well as resurfacing Golf Field Crescent and Eagle Place, as well as the 1.1 million in underground infrastructure investment. All while a zero-mill rate increase with no diventures beyond five years and no more than an average of 3% interest rate. I commend the administration for what they've done, and I commend my fellow colleagues. I will be voting in favor of this budget.
Anything further of council? Anything in closing? Okay, council, thank you. Yes, I agree too. This is a great budget. I want to take a moment now to Mr. Workington. I want to thank you and your staff for working so hard on this budget and getting this budget, helping us get this budget where it was, and giving us suggestions in what, in places where we can move money around and make things work. Council, this is a very aggressive budget. We are doing all the things we've promised. Every, like, we're continuing, like everyone said, we're continuing our infrastructure renewal. We're adding more pathways. We're replacing, fixing equipment, and we're paying down debt. There's, this budget is, it's amazing. It's almost, it's unbelievable what you can do when you all put your heads together. Council, I want to thank you very much for working so hard. And, you know, it wasn't easy. We didn't always agree, but you know what? We came out with this budget, and this is by far our finest piece of work this year yet. Thank you very much. And you know what? At this point, before we all get together for a group hug, we're just going to have, we're going to call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you, council.
I'm not hugging any of you.
I figured I'd get that response from you.
I'm out.
Michael won't hug either.
It's not back to that, sorry.
Okay, seven, we have no delegations. We'll move to number eight, reports and recommendations from our city manager. Eight-eight, Deerfield Path Pond and Pathway. Read the tender award. That is found on page 15 of your package. Mr. Workington, would you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This tender was for a proposed 2019 capital project for the construction of the Deerfield Middle Detention Pond and Pathway, and the tender closed on March 7, 2019, with seven bids having been received. Recommendation letter by the city's project engineer, WSP, is also included in the agenda package, and their recommendation is to award the tender to the low bid, being from Freezing, Hauling, and Excavating, Inc., for a total price of $588,550 plus GST. And the funding for this particular program has been budgeted for, by the city's Capital Development Reserve and Gas Tax Reserve. Recommendation from administration is to award.
Okay, council. We have a recommendation to award the tender. How would you like to proceed? Counselor Jake Siemens?
Motion to approve that be awarded to Freezing, Hauling, and Excavating.
Do we have a seconder? Counselor Bill Hebert? Go ahead, Counselor Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna, when this was saying, "I love green space," but I won't.
It's your favorite.
The, Mr. Mayor, this is a project that has been part of our planning for many years. It's a continuation of the pathway and detention ponds in the Deerfield area, and has come over $120,000 under budget from the budgeted. So, we're already saving money on our new budget we just approved in principle. So, I think this is a good step forward. It provides more pathways and green space opportunities in the Deerfield area, and it's a continuation of a project that was started many years ago.
Counselor Hebert, anything?
I would second that, because I also love the pathways. The fact that it came in under budget, I think is awesome. So, definitely no reserve here. It's, go ahead, in my opinion.
Anything further of council? Anything in closing? Well, I think it's all been said, so we'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Okay, we will go now to nine. Nine-eight, the accounts payable. They're in the back of the book. We've, all had time to review. I need a motion to approve. Counselor Damian Penner, second by Counselor Jake Hebert. Any comments? Anything further? Anything in closing? Call for the question. All those in favor? That is approved. We'll go to nine-b, the financial statements ending January 31, 2019. They're in the back of the book, too. We've had time to review them. Motion to approve. Counselor Jake Siemens, second by Counselor Bill Hebert. Any comments?
No comments.
Nothing in closing? Call for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. And we have the financial statements ending February 28, 2019, and they're at the back of the book, too. I just need a motion to approve. Counselor Susan Penner, second by Counselor Jake Siemens. Any comments? Okay, say none. Call for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Nine-d, building permits on page 19. Oh, sorry. Yeah, building permits. On page 19 of the package, we have a value this month, or this was for February, of just under $4 million. Bringing in our total to date, just over 6.5 million. I need a motion to approve. Counselor Michael Swexer, second by Counselor Bill Hebert. Anything? Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're, I think this is a good, a good set of numbers for February. I should note that the largest project by far is an apartment complex that's being built at $2.8 million. But when you have the month at almost $4 million in February, that bodes well, because the winter months tend to be our lower numbers for building permits.
Anything further?
I would say growth is good, so let's move ahead.
Anything from, yes, council? Anything in closing? Yes, I think $4 million for February, very good month. Shortest month of the year, and one of the coldest. So, call for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. We are at nine-f, that is subdivision... I'm sorry, did I miss business licenses? Sorry. Business licenses, page 20. There's a motion to approve on page 20. Do I have a mover? Counselor Susan Penner, second by Counselor Jake Hebert. Okay. Anything? Nothing in closing? Call for the question. All those in favor? That is approved. Now, we are at nine-f, subdivision 445120198119, TCK Holdings, Inc. That is on 70 PTH 12 North, 32 Acres Drive. It's on page 21 of your package. Mr. Workington, would you please introduce this file?
Yes, this is an application for subdivision for the creation of one new lot by the realignment of some boundaries of some existing lots for property that currently fronts on PTH 12 North. Whoever the proposed new lot under this subdivision application would front on Acres Drive. This is intended to help facilitate additional commercial industrial development, and subject to the execution of drainage easement, shared access, and development agreements. Recommendation from administration is for council to approve.
Just a question for clarification. You're bringing in the drainage easement because of the drain that runs in the back of the property?
Yes, there is a significant drain that currently runs on the western edge of the subject properties, and administration is recommending that the owner of the property enter into a drainage easement agreement with the city.
Okay, council. How would you like to proceed? Counselor Michael Swexer?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Jake Hebert? Go ahead, Counselor Swexer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it makes sense to proceed. Basically, we're realigning the boundaries of these existing properties, and this enables the creation of a new lot for industrial purposes. That means that we have more potential commercial slash industrial activity within the City of Steinbach, and that's a good thing, so it makes sense to proceed.
Anything further? Anything from council? No comments? Anything in closing?
No.
Okay, council. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We are at nine-h, that is bylaw 2118, Plan of Public Drain, Third Reading. You'll find that on page 50 of your package. Mr. Workington, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, this particular bylaw, Plan of Public Drain, bylaw 2118, relates to a proposed residential subdivision that was conditionally approved by council previously. Recommendation is to give this bylaw third reading.
Okay, thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Jake Siemens?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Hebert, you second. Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Siemens.
This is the third final reading for a drain that we approved a number of meetings ago in the Lexington area for, I believe, Phase Four of their development.
Anything further? Anything, any comments from council? Anything in closing? Okay, I will call for the question. All those in favor? Okay, that is carried. We are at nine-h. This is bylaw 2119, Plan of Works, Third Reading. You'll find this on page 54 of your package. Mr. Workington, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, similar to bylaw 2118, this bylaw of Plan of Works, bylaw 2119, also relates to the management of stormwater in a detention pond, and also will provide green space for the same subdivision. Recommendation is for council to give this bylaw third reading.
Okay, council. How would you like to proceed? Counselor Swexer?
I'll make the motion for third reading.
Counselor Damian Penner, second. Okay, and go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Basically, the same comments as the previous item, the, we gave first and second reading, so we're moving ahead to third.
Okay, anything further? Nothing in closing? Okay, we'll call for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Okay, we have nine-i, 2018 Grants for Reconciliation. That's on page 58. Mr. Workington, it's all clear here, but is there anything you'd like to add at all?
I have nothing further to add, Mr. Mayor.
Further to add? Well, then, there is a recommendation from Mr. Harechuk, our senior manager of finance, to adopt this 2018 grant summary report. Can I have a motion to adopt? Counselor Bill Hebert, second by Counselor Susan Penner. Okay, go ahead, Mr....
I would, I would put a motion first to adopt this, as it is.
Okay. Anything?
Yeah, just like to make a comment. You'll notice there's a $900,000 grant to the Bethesda Foundation, and I just want to acknowledge that, how we support what they are doing, and we appreciate what we are doing, what they are doing for communities with the PCH announcement, primary healthcare center. Future projects in the works as well. They've done a lot for community, and I'm happy to, that council's agreed to support them to this degree.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Anything in closing, Mr., or Counselor Hebert?
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I agree with Counselor Susan Penner. This does, these grants do show that council's invested in Steinbach, invested in organizations, and is committed to making Steinbach a better place. So, with that, I'd like to call for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. We are at nine-j, the 2018 Reserve Transfers. That's on page 59. I know all the information is here, but Mr. Workington, would you, would you like to add more to this?
Well, I could, but there's a lot of numbers. I'm not sure if you'd like any more...
That's why I looked at that, and I said, "I don't want to say all these numbers."
Yeah. I'll try and summarize. This is a 2018 summary of all the reserve transfers that administration and our finance department has entered into the city's accounts with respect to operating programs, capital projects, or sources of revenue for which the City of Steinbach has either had restrictions imposed upon it by provincial regulation, provincial law, by city bylaw, or city policy. And a number of these reserve transfers are either moving from one of the city's operating funds into the reserve funds for future use, or the funds are being transferred out of one or more of the city's reserve funds into the city's operating funds to facilitate programs and infrastructure development during the year. We do summarize these transfers in one schedule, as you've been presented in this package, at the end of the year. However, with some additional surpluses that were experienced for the 2018 fiscal year, there are some additional larger lump sum transfers that administration has also included in this package for council's consideration. For example, second row from the top, you'll see a line item of $675,000, recommendation to be transferred from the city's general operating fund to the Capital Development Reserve. Moving further down in that section, getting closer towards the bottom, there are further grant transfers, or sorry, reserve fund transfers being recommended to be transferred into the city's committed expenditure reserve fund in the amount of $200,000 for the City of Steinbach council's grant commitment for Bethesda, the Bethesda Foundation. And then lastly, second from the bottom in that top section, also recommended a reserve transfer of $500,000 to the city's land and building reserve to be used for future land purchases and building development, as are proposed in either the 2019 or future operating and capital budgets. Overall, if there are any other specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you, but otherwise, recommendation is to approve the recommended transfers as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Workington, for those highlights. Counselor Swexer?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Jake Hebert? Go ahead, Counselor Swexer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The process of approving the reserve transfers is something, as Mr. Workington noted, that we do every year, and obviously, in many of the line items here, this is simply reflecting the fact that money has come into the reserves through some of the different fees that we have. You'll see that listed in some of the Capital Development Reserve line items, you know, the impact, the water and sewer impact fees, the sidewalk levy, that sort of thing, and that money is reflected there. And as also was noted, that every year, when there are some surplus funds, that is when we replenish some of our reserves, notably in the Capital Development Reserve, the land and building reserve, also a small amount in the pool reserve. These are reserves that we make regular use of. These reserves are extremely important, because we use them to, as part of our long-term planning process, so that way, in the years where we have larger projects, we're able to transfer money out of the reserve in order to, in order to pay for some of the larger capital and other projects that we have. And so, this is responsible budgeting. This is how we're supposed to do things, that when there are some surplus funds, that we make sure that we put it into appropriate reserves, so that way, we're able to access it for other projects for the city. So, certainly, this is, it makes sense to do these transfers.
Anything further from council? Anything in closing?
No.
Okay, I'm good to call for the question. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Number 10, council question period. Are there any questions of council? Number 11, correspondence and petitions. We have 11-a on page 61 of your package. It is the Sane River Conservation District. Read the minutes of December 12, 2018, January 22, 2019, and February 1, 2019. Counsel, should we take this as information? Okay. We have 11-b, the J-CAP Library Minutes. Read January 16, 2019, and February 27, 2019. Counsel, would you like to proceed by just taking these as information? Okay. That brings us to Luke Weeb. Read the grant request. That is on page 72, counsel. We have, we've all read this. This, there's a grant request here. I'll just summarize. The developer is asking for a request that the city provide $10,000 demo grant per lot to help them with their project in many of the extra risks they have due to the development that they're doing. So, council, I ask you now, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Swexer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will make the motion that we deny the request.
Deny the request? Okay, do we have a seconder? Counselor Jake Siemens. Go ahead, Counselor Swexer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start by acknowledging something that's... Let me, uh, start by acknowledging something that, uh, that I agree with in the letter, and that is that, uh, that the applicant, uh, here is correct, that, uh, as a result of a decision by the municipal board, the, uh, and the additional conditions that were put in place, uh, by the municipal board, that were not, uh, put in place by council, but were actually beyond that, uh, that does make the project more challenging to go ahead with. So I fully acknowledge that. But the question is, does that mean that it is up to the taxpayers of Steinbach, the people of Steinbach, to have to make up the difference? And I would say definitely not. Uh, as a city, we are very clear that, uh, when it comes to development, and particularly when we're talking about residential development here, that it's developer pay. That if you want to develop within the city, you're welcome to develop within the city. We encourage that. Uh, we have a lot of development that happens within the city, but the costs are paid by the developer. That's how, uh, that's how we operate as a city, and that's how it is supposed to be. So that, everything from, you know, the building that the developer builds, the costs associated with that, the infrastructure that leads up to that, that is developer pay. If we go down this road, even though the actual dollar amount is relatively small, but, you know, ten-thousand dollars demo grant per lot, and I believe, or, I think there's six lots here, so sixty-thousand dollars, that is not a huge amount of money, but think of the precedent that that sets. That means that any developer, that at any point in the future, either is a result of a decision that the city's made, or the municipal board has made, that has a concern that, "Well, my project has now become more expensive. I would like taxpayers to now pay the difference." That is a road that we cannot go down. I do not want to send that message. I do not want to send the message when I think about all the previous developers who have developed and have paid all the costs themselves, and you think about how they're going to react if they hear that we've given a special grant here, and thinking about future developments. Uh, there is only so much money that we have, and we've made that very clear in our budget, that we have to be responsible with our budgeting, and, uh, we, uh, we do not want part of our budget to be going towards paying develop, developers. The reality is that if you want to develop, you're encouraged to do so, but you have to operate within the rules, and even when the rules sometimes make it more expensive, that is for the developer to deal with. It is not, uh, it's not for taxpayers to deal with. So, uh, we cannot go down this road, even if the costs are more here as a result of what the municipal board has said. That is not up to city taxpayers to make the difference, so we have to deny the request.
Counselor Siemens?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also, uh, agree with many of the comments made. Uh, nineteen-eighties, we, the city of Steinbach, uh, developed the developer pay policy, and we've been following it, uh, since. And it would be precedent setting, without a doubt, it, uh, the direction, but also, we don't have, uh, currently, we don't have a process, uh, under the city bylaws that would allow us to pay out a grant to a, to a for-profit organization. All our granting program and our bylaws is, uh, directed only at, at nonprofit organizations, so we would have to build a specific bylaw in, in order to make this happen. But, uh, I vote in favor of the motion to deny, for many of the same reasons. Uh, we do have a developer pay mentality in Steinbach, and, uh, that has been, worked very well for us. And, uh, but maybe the biggest issue be the precedent setting in this whole process, that how many, uh, other requests would we get immediately?
Anything further from council? Yes, Mr., uh, Counselor Hebert?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just, uh, like to, uh, compliment Royal LePage and the Weeb family for the businesses, the work that they do in this community, and the added value to our community. Uh, so thank you very much for what you, what you and your family do. However, when I look at this request, after regurgitate what, uh, Counselor Swagstra said, this is not the city's mandate. We are, uh, not in the business of funding private ventures, development projects. This would be a precedent setting and, uh, would not, uh, and it would be open-ended. That's the scariest part, if we, if we start doing these things. The city cannot support such an activity, and on behalf of the taxpayer to, to fund a private business, so I, again, I, I can't agree with, uh, the city funding that amount of money.
Anything further from council? Anything in closing? Okay, council, you know, this is, these are those tough decisions we gotta make. As much as we feel for the developer on one side, and we can empathize with the, the extra strain that's been, and risk that's been put on them, on the other hand, we have to look at our, we have to look at our, our taxpayers and our residents, and we have to look at our bylaws. Our bylaws don't even allow us to do this. So this is, this is not a, a, a quick fix. It's not a, it's a lengthy process to even go down this road. So for that reason, we're, we're best off to deny. But you guys, you all have your own choice, and we know how four of us feel, but the rest of us will have to, uh, to decide from there. But, uh, I will not, I will be supporting the motion, too, because our, the precedent setting it is, and the fact that our bylaws don't even support doing something like this. So I will call for the question. All those in favor of the motion to deny? Opposed, that is carried. Okay. We are on, uh, twelve, other business, twelve-A. We are at the library motion now, so I will, uh, I will give, uh, Counselor Damon Penner the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to propose the, uh, one-time technology grant request on behalf of the JCAP library, whereas, public libraries are a long-established hub that serve the intellectual, social, and cultural needs of the community. Whereas, the JCAP library is operating on outdated computers that are no longer providing the service required to continue their day-to-day operations. Whereas, the JCAP library operates on a limited budget with very careful fiscal discretion. Whereas, the JCAP library has exhausted all other available grant options to secure technology funding. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Steinbach approve a one-time technology grant to the JCAP library in the amount of seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents to be put towards the upgrade of their computer system.
Twenty cents?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a seconder for that? Counselor Susan Penner? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The JCAP library is a central hub of activity in our community, serving thousands of people a month. Their current computer system is grossly outdated and in desperate need of renewal. Currently, the JCAP library budgets two-thousand dollars per year towards new technology, but because of the outdated system, this is getting used up on repairs and short-term fixes to try to keep the current workstations operating. The main server has been a major hurdle alone in the library that they have had to overcome, requiring three service calls in the last two weeks. Not only is this expensive to continue to maintain, but is reducing the efficiency of the staff and pulling work hours away from regular duties to focus on the computer systems. As mentioned, the server alone has failed multiple times, and although it has been brought back to life, it is only a matter of time before the server fails in its entirety, creating major service, service call expenses. This is a grant that is needed immediately, as the majority of the computers are on or beyond life support, and subsequently, a substantial drain on the bottom line of the library's annual budget. We need to make sure that as a city, we are investing into our community services. The JCAP library is funded primarily by the city of Steinbach, and therefore, it falls on, on our responsibility to ensure we are providing our staff with the tools they require to be able to provide these services. This one-time grant will allow the library to invest in new technology that will allow them to be able to focus on what they are intended to do, aid in early and lifelong literacy, provide access to information in our community, and continue their community-focused programming, programming for all citizens of all ages. This one-time grant will allow the JCAP library to purchase nine staff workstations, three admin computers, a new server, and new software to allow remote access and reduce service expenses in the long run. I hope council will vote in favor of this short-term investment into our library that will provide a long-term benefit.
Anything further, Counselor Penner?
Yes, thank you. When I, uh, take a look at this, and when I think about our grants policy, our policy says, that way, grants available, or, or, uh, for capital grants, kind of one-time seed money, um, I'm not sure if technically this is a capital grant, but is that type of thing? Where it's not operational, it's a one-time need, and I think that is really the reason for our grants policy, uh, to be able to help organizations in, in a situation like this. So for me, um, I can gladly support this, because I do, it reflects the intention and the spirit of what our grants policy is intended for.
I have a question for you, uh, Counselor Damon Penner. According to the information you gave us, is, is it true that the library is going down from twelve to eight computers with this, with this?
Yes, for public access, they're, they're going down from, from twelve to eight, and that's just a sign of technology in the times. Uh, there's more people that have had, have devices that have access to internet, as well as Wi-Fi available to the public at the library, so they are reducing the amount of public access, access computers, but not, there isn't a need, out of, not a need for them, not because they're reducing the services available to the citizens.
Okay. Thank you. Is there, uh, anything further from, oh, Counselor Swagstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just point out that, uh, this is, uh, the JCAP library is an organization that we currently, uh, give a grant to, so I'm not concerned about setting a precedent here, because this is an organization that we currently, uh, that we currently fund, and this is a one-time increase for, uh, for an important need, and I think the case has been presented very well.
Anything further? Anything in closing?
Uh, just to say that I, I really do truly appreciate that what the JCAP library does. They are investing into our community, they're investing in long-term literacy to all of our citizens, and that's something that's very important, important to, to us, and it should be important to our citizens as well, and this is going to help them to, to advance that further.
Okay. Thank you, council. Yes, I, I, I can, I can support this motion. I do, on a caution, we, yeah, we do, uh, give them a grant, we did give them an increase, but this, again, is a special need, and this is a one-time, this is a one-time grant that we'll be giving, and they are actually also seeing that they can get done, uh, get through with less, uh, so you're gonna have less, more, like, the administration computers you're, you're replacing, and the, the browsing computers are, are dropping off, basically[1766.83]